Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Tonight, we begin our city council meeting as all of ours. We begin with prayer and then the pledge. Please join me in as we thank those that we need to. Gracious Father, we just come to you with all the praise and glory. We thank you for the citizens of Saginaw. We thank you for all those that are involved and especially those involved in keeping our citizens safe, our firefighters, our police officers. We thank you for this honor that we have today to swear in three new officers and ask you be with them and their families, be with all our citizens, especially during this holiday. Be with all our citizens for that, and we ask that in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance
... to the United States of America, in which the Republic of which expands, one my nation, under God, indivisible, et veritatis in Deo.
Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call for us, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Fitzpatrick is absent. Councilwoman Tibbs, Councilwoman Bench, Mayor Protam O'Neil, Councilman Caloris, Councilwoman Moore is absent. Councilman Balls, Councilman Clark is absent. Mayor Browning, we have six members present and three absent.
I'd like to remind the audience that during a council meeting, please try to remain quiet and refrain from speaking. This is an excellent time for you now to check that phone. Make sure your phone is turned off or silenced during -- you don't want me to make me use this gavel, so, but I never have, so maybe that'd be a first. So with that, Madam Clerk, what's our first order of business?
Well, I do have one announcement, Mayor. As of January 1st, 2015, curbside recycling will be upgraded to include more materials and eliminate the sorting requirements. For complete details, please visit the city's website at saginaw-mi.com. And our first order of business is we have the official oath of office for the Police Department.
Well, thank you, and I'm very honored to be able to be a part of this with the history that I have with the city. I'm very honored to do this. We have three police candidates to be sworn in today, and I'm going to call all three candidates up, please. Samantha Booth, Jordan Brady Parnell, and Richard DeLong. I thought it was Brady, not Brady. I'm sorry. Right here in the front, over here, center, please. Look how nice and tall and straight.
... and we can ask you, I, the Thomas, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this State, and that I will face these persons with the duties of the officer, police officer, for the city of Saginaw.
You gave the new life to the man, but I'm using two. Newest officers. We're really excited about our newest officers, especially at a time when unfortunately, in some places, it's not very popular at these times of days to be an officer. But these officers have taken an oath. You heard them today. They will take an oath, and they will defend the city of Saginaw, and we're really very proud of all three of those. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Your next official business is a proclamation for a gospel recording artist, Jessica Reedy.
There's so many good things going on in Saginaw, and we're really excited to have Jessica Reedy here with us today. So Jessica, would you join us at the podium? And I'm just going to try to get through this thing the best I can. This is a proclamation, Jessica, from the city of Saginaw, in your honor. Whereas the city of Saginaw Council is proud to recognize Jessica Reedy, nationally-known gospel singer and songwriter, for her unique gift, talents, abilities, and an unwavering conviction to her faith. And whereas Jessica was born and raised in Saginaw and is a 2006 graduate of Saginaw High School, at the young age of four, Jessica would often sing after her grandfather's sermon at the local Saginaw churches. Soon, she was singing everywhere she could, at churches and at local talent competition, a pattern that continued all the way through her high school years. And whereas Jessica received national exposure as a finalist on the BTE Network's Gospel Competition, Sunday Best. Throughout the show's season, Jessica stunned the judges and the nation with her vocal abilities and finished as first runner-up for Sunday Best, Season Number Two, in 2009. And whereas Jessica debuted album, From the Heart, was released in 2011 and debuted at number one on the Billboard Gospel Album Chart and on the Christian and Gospel iTunes Chart. The album received rave reviews, being noted as mature and thoughtful by several in the industry. Jessica was soon sharing the stage with contemporary gospel greats like Mary Mary, Beebe Winans, Kurt -- I'm sorry, Winans? Okay. Kurt Franklin, Fred Hammond, Donald Lawrence, Chiara, is it Chiara? Shred, Rick Shear. Thank you. Ricky Dillard, and many others. And whereas Jessica's second album, Transparent, was released in November 2014 and debuted at number five on the Billboard's Hot 100. Many of the songs on Transparent were written by Ms. Reedy. Throughout the album, she shares her pain and accomplishments, hoping all who hear will find a reason to hope and to celebrate their own lives. And whereas Jessica has blessed the citizens of Saginaw with Christmas with a concert at the Dow Event Center where she shared her vocal abilities for many Christmas classics. Jessica is also leading her support to poetic justice jeans, raising funds for women charities around the country. And whereas Jessica feels her most important role is to be a godly example to all, especially to her seven-year-old son, Justin. As a mother, Jessica continues a family legacy of faith, hope, and trust in faithful God. Jessica believes God has a purpose for her life, and she willingly shares her testimony of God's grace to encourage others. And whereas Jessica has set the example for others as an exemplary citizen, whose good works and dedication helped to bring renewed hope to many citizens, we give honor and recognition this day for the gifts and talents of Jessica Reedy to inspire, enlighten, and encourage others. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, on behalf of my fellow council members and the citizens of this community, do hereby extend this expression of our esteemed appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Jessica Reedy for the positive impact she has made in our community. We congratulate Ms. Reedy and extend our very best wishes for continued success in all of her future endeavors. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the city of the Saginaw to be affixed this 22nd day of December in the year of our Lord 2014. Signed, Dennis D. Browning. Mayor, councilpersons, Amos O'Neil, Mayor Protam, Michael Balls, Annie Bench, Larry Caloris, Daniel Fitzpatrick, Floyd Clock, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, Timothy Morales, City Manager. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for taking time out to acknowledge something as small as what I'm supposed to do. This is a great encouragement for myself, and I pray that it encourages the rest of the youth of the community, that there's a lot of light that happens in the midst of darkness. And what you all do to acknowledge little people like myself is very encouraging. So thank you. I pray that God continues to bless you and your families, and that Jesus continues to shine His light in Saginaw, Michigan. Thank you.
Mayor, your next item of business are personal appearances.
And just to remind the speakers that you are limited to three minutes. The purpose of the personal appearance is to address city council. Speakers shall address their remarks to the council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. Questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you call our first public speaker?
Yes, our first personal appearance is David Ortega.
David Ortega, resident city of Saginaw. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, support staff, and my fellow citizens. We've had some problems this fall regarding diversity on a police department. Mr. Pruitt said, "Vote no." Ms. Wilson relented and says, "Let's stay neutral." They're complaining about diversity on a department. Actually, what they're talking about, youth diversity, actually is a euphemism for promoting blackness. We don't need that. I'm going to give you some examples about diversity on a department, all involving black female officers. One, fired for giving information to her brother, who was a Northside drug dealer. Two, fired for smoking crack. The third one is a real gem. She had a job doing goodwill and PR work for the department, couldn't drive the motor home. A white officer had to drive it to the event. She would show, do what she did, and he'd have to come back and drive the vehicle back. Got drunk at a picnic. She was a state delegate at a convention, falling down drunk. That's real impressive. And lastly, in a drunken fight with her husband, a white man, she pulled a gun. Would not surrender till the road sergeant showed up. And who was the road sergeant? The fourth one. What was her claim to fame? She went on a school bus in uniform with a gun belt and confronted a teen. Why? Because that teen had had a problem with one of her relatives. That's really good. Boy, I'm really proud of that kind of diversity. What do we do about it? I don't know. You tell me. These events are really embarrassing to our department, if that's what you call diversity. And now what do we have? We have race baiting, tax dodging, Al Sharpton, and President Obama saying the police need to be retrained, these young officers here. You know what? Obama should learn what the President's job really is. Let him wear the body camera. Sharpton? He's beyond redemption. He incites rioting. Thank you.
You bet.
Our next personal appearance is Keith Dugan.
Now would be a time to do that before Mr. Dugan speaks. I want to give him the time. Please have them step away from the door for me a little quicker so we can get going, Mm-hmm. Mr. Dugan, thank you very much for your patience, and I think it'll be pretty quiet now at the end there. So go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Keith Dugan. I'm here to address your new water bill policy. You know, I just recently moved back here to Saginaw from Dallas to take over our family home, in which my brother lived there for many years. My family has lived there for over 50 years. Getting the water bill switched from my brother's name to my name, I was informed that I had to pay a $250 deposit, which I had no problem doing that. I asked a clerk at that time, you know, well, when do I get my deposit back? Well, he tells me, well, when you move out of the residence. That's the new ordinance that we have here. I never planned on moving out of this residence. So I guess what I'm trying to find out is what happens to my $250 deposit. So I'm here to address the city council about it. It doesn't make much sense to me. I paid up the taxes on the home, which there's zero taxes owed. You know, I was told the taxes were attached to -- the water bill was attached to this home because I rented a house for my son out here a few years ago, which I paid all his past bills. So I guess I'm here to find out about what happens to my $250. Do you indefinitely keep my money till I'm 95 years old and I go to Forest Lawn here? Or do I receive it back at some time and point?
Okay. We'll have -- we'll refer that to the city manager, and somebody will get back with you.
I would appreciate it, sir.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Our final personal appearance is Joe LaPrena.
Good evening, Mayor, Protam Mayor. My name is Joe LaPrena. I preside at 1118 Cass. This is the second time I come in front of the city council tonight. I have three things that I'm requesting to look at. One is the curfew of the city of Saginaw. To present from kids getting shot or killed in the city of Saginaw, what time is the curfew? I had understood that the curfew was moved from 9:00 to 6:00, which at still at 6:00 at night, there's kids still roaming the streets. The other thing is the street -- there's a street light out by my house on Oakley and Cass. Do the city of Saginaw taxpayers pay for someone to get the lights fixed? I'm not going to fix it because we already know what's going to happen because the last time one of the persons on the city councils had said to me. And the third thing is about the streets of Saginaw. There is grants that the city of Saginaw can file to get the roads fixed because the asphalt is not working. I've been on a star's bus three times this year when the asphalt's being put down, and all that asphalt is getting run over, getting caught into the wheels, and making noise. It's not getting patted down the correct way, and it's not working. I know the city of Saginaw can file for grants because Carleton Township filed for grants, if you remember, when they redid Shattuck Road. I was not on the city council at that time, but Carleton Township filed a grant to get the Shattuck Road refixed and re-merged the way it is. If you would like, you should take a ride down that road and see what they had done to it. I don't know what year they done -- what year it was done, but the city needs to look at something, at curfews, our roads, because once again, taxpayers are going to get sick and tired voting for you guys and try to support you guys when you're not doing the job for the residents or for the city. Thank you.
Mayor, your next item of business is remarks of council.
Thank you. If I might sheet here, let it go. Okay, remarks from council. And council members, just a reminder, we're limited to five minutes, and tonight we're going to begin with Councilman Caloris.
Well, thank you. And as much as everybody's pretty well left, I only have a few friends out here to say Merry Christmas to, and anyone else who's listening. Have a nice Christmas, have a safe holiday. See you next year.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, on your end.
I think he thinks, is there a game tonight? Is there a game? Yes, yes, yeah, playoffs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas. And, you know, I feel very proud tonight. I mean, from what I saw, I'm very proud of that. So, Mr. City Manager, HR Department, all who were involved in the selection process or processing our young professionals through this level, I think that was a very fine representation of the city. And I feel very good about it, and it's very good to see. So, thank you for that. Also, I want to congratulate Ms. Reedy. Obviously, she's done so much for the city of Saginaw, being a young lady, going across country nationally, being touted as one of the top singers in the nation, and it was very fitting to do this. Not sure who did it, but whoever did it was a great idea to do it.
Councilman Tibbs. I'm going to pass it on, work long. Councilman Tibbs.
Good job. Good job. That was very well deserved. Also, I'd like to express some appreciation for some community members. As you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, nationally, we saw the horrendous attack on some police law enforcement officers in New York, and no one wants that to happen. And sincerely express my condolences for that. And we've been talking about some of these issues pretty frequently here in Saginaw, and I want to thank some community members for taking a proactive lead. I mentioned some time ago about a group of folks who started meeting and talking about how could we educate and inform the public in terms of how to engage and interact with the law enforcement community when they're stopped. And November the 20th, I think it was the 20th, I happened to be out of town that day, but we had our first event at Mount Isle Baptist Church where law enforcement professionals retired from Saginaw police. We had attorneys, prosecutors from the Saginaw County Prosecutor's Office, and educators, all for the purpose of creating an opportunity for informing the youth in terms of how to engage and respond to law enforcement. And it was very well attended. I believe, Councilman Tibbs, you were there for a period of time, and you could probably attest to what I'm saying. But that was just the beginning of many summits to come in terms of bringing the public to the table to talk about these issues and to, you know, hear their opinions and have professional dialogue in terms of the rights of an individual, the role of a law enforcement officer when they stop an individual, and hopefully we can find a common ground to have some balance in terms of having the officers understand that everyone's not a criminal, obviously. And but when the criminals are stopped, we shouldn't, you know, rag the officers for doing their job, okay? So there's a balance, and we all understand that. But I want to thank those individuals. Mr. Henry Hobson, just a name, retired officer, he's very involved in that. Dr. Don Hinton from Saginaw Valley State University, Karen Long-Swepters from Delta College, Charles McNear, who's a retired educator, and there are so many others that who started this process. But I wanted to note those individuals because But I wanted to note those individuals, because I know Mr. Henry Hobson is very well respected, and he really had a passion and a vision to be a part of this, and it's been very well received. And also, the faith-based community, and that of Pastor Marvin T. Smith of Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church Institutional Church, opened his doors, opened their doors, for us to have this event, and we plan to have more. So I just wanted to say thank you to those individuals, and there are a lot of concerned citizens in Saginaw who care about people, and that's the point I want to make. They care about people, black, white, green, and brown, it doesn't matter. There are a lot of concerned people in Saginaw, and they want to make the city better. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my comments, and again, Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nanny Bench.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everyone, and see you back here in 2015, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd like to congratulate and recognize the sworn officers who were just sworn in today. I heard a lot of great things about this class, and I thank you for your service. I'd like to thank Jessica Reddy for being here. It's great for her to take her time out of her busy schedule. I believe she had a concert in Philadelphia this past weekend, as well as here in Saginaw. The city, the state, and this country should be proud of the talent that comes out of this city. It's just astonishing as far as how much talent come out of this area. I guess I'd like to recognize the Joseph Diaz family. He was the first inductee to the Saginaw Hispanic Hall of Fame. His contribution to the city is great. Obviously, I didn't know the man, but I read about it in the paper, and I guess I have to piggyback on the comments that the Saginaw County Hall of Fame President said. He said notable Hispanic community leaders should receive their due credit, and programs like this does that, and we should continue to support it. Stacy Irwin Oaks, our state rep, she gave her farewell address at the House floor a few weeks back. She represented our city and the 95th District for the past four years. Maybe the city should possibly consider doing a proclamation for her. I mean, she came from Saginaw, Saginaw High, and I believe she did what she wanted to accomplish. She wanted to be a role model for our kids, and I think she did that. I'd like to recognize Jerome Scott, someone who suddenly passed a few weeks ago. He was a coach, mentor, counselor, and friend to many in our public school district. I think he should be-- I just want to thank him and recognize him for the job he did with our kids. That's the type of role model our kids need to be-- to grow up to be productive residents. I'd like to recognize One Week One Street. They met earlier this month to discuss the Saginaw Fairgrounds, and they invited many of our city and county leaders, and they were there to discuss a possible redevelopment. It's definitely a tough road to hoe, considering the financial constraints there, but it has to start somewhere, and it starts by having such meetings, and I thank you for your efforts. And finally, I'd like to thank the city. I was able to take advantage of dropping the leaves off at the-- right across the street, and rather than it sitting in my backyard and making a mess for me in the spring, you opened yourself up and made it available, and I wasn't the only one. I had to wait in line a few times, so thank you for that, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ball.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to be real brief. I have a daughter who just flew in from out of state, and I haven't seen her yet, so I want to get out here as soon as we can. But, having said that, yeah, I will be very brief. I do want to say it's very gratifying that the city was able to swear in three new police officers today. Aside from the fact that we certainly need them, it's nice to see new blood, it's nice to see a little diversity come in, it's nice to see everything that we've been looking for in having new people on the street. So that was-- as I said, it was very gratifying. With that, thanks to all the other recognitions, Ms. Reedy and all the other speakers, but most of all, I want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and a Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
To the citizens of Saginaw, I'd like to thank you all for showing up for the meeting today, and for those at home that's watching, I hope that you get something good out of the city council meeting. I wasn't too happy with some of the comments that I heard earlier, but everybody can come and say what they need to say, I guess, but I'm glad to see some diversity on the police force. We need-- our cities need to look just like our citizens look, so I'm glad to see that. I did notice, too, there's obvious that when the police are trained, they don't get the allotment of donuts yet. Looking at those people, I can tell that's a-- hopefully, they'll stay slim and trim for the rest of their careers. No offense to the previous police officers. Were you a police officer, sir? Okay. But you know what? You know, there's a lot of things going on in the city. We do need a proactive approach to things, you know? Sometime when you have proactive approach, you don't see the results of them sometime, because if it's all about getting kids jobs, people don't come and say, "Well, I got a job." If you keep people from not doing crime, you don't come here and say, "Well, I didn't do no crime today," you know? But we need to keep doing these type of things, regardless of the accolades that you get out of the fact. I got this flyer in my packet about the STEM and Career in College Expo that's happening February the 3rd, 2015. I'd like all the citizens of the city of Saginaw to find out about this-- about the Saginaw Career Complex, the STEM thing that's happening February the 3rd. Everybody can come and take a look at the program from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and see how their kids can get involved in industries that we really need people in, in the city of Saginaw and the state of Michigan. We got skilled tradesmen that's coming from all over the country to come here to Saginaw to get jobs, but we need to grow those people right here in our own city. They have some good-paying jobs, and they help people to buy nice homes and stuff like that, and keep their homes together. So hopefully, everybody would try to find out what's happening with this. So I'd like to thank the city manager for putting that in my packet. I'm looking forward to Mrs. Stempel and Mr. Novak coming and telling us about the TARP funds and what's going on. I'd like to thank those guys for doing such a good job. We had a lot of complaining last, the first of the year, about what's happening with the houses and stuff like that, and the weeds growing and all that kind of stuff, but now we got clover growing, and it's only a certain length, so high. They tearing down the houses, and it's looking pretty good. And I see the citizens are buying some of those lots and incorporating them in their yards and stuff like that, so I want to tell you guys, I appreciate what you guys are doing. Keep up the good work. Other than that, I'd like to thank the citizens and the city of Saginaw, the staff. I hope that you guys have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and come back next year so we can take care of some old business for the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Couple things from myself I'd like to do, and I certainly want to thank all our speakers who came tonight to speak. And I know Joe was still here. This is the second time, Joe, that you've addressed the city council, and thank you very much for that. I appreciate that. I will take all these things in consideration. I would ask one thing, though, and I want to invite you back. If you could find just one thing in Saginaw that you would like, I'd like to hear about it. If you could find just one thing, I'd like to hear about that. Our swearing-in ceremony was pretty exciting, and not all police officers eat donuts. I will tell you that right off the bat, and I certainly don't want to encourage that at all. Unfortunately, I met-- actually, I walked in on the chief today, who was having lunch with our three candidates, and I was invited to sit at the table with them. That was pretty nice. We met at the Savoy, or they were at the Savoy, and I really enjoyed speaking with them. It would have been nice to have a fourth person here, but unfortunately, we have a Hispanic young man who's going through the academy and was injured. He does work at our police department as a civilian, and we're hoping that our next academy, that he will be back, and soon to join us, and I think that's really well. Without the formal title of a police cadet, I think that's about as close as you can get to one, without calling him a police cadet, and I'm really looking forward to that, and the young officers that are here today. And I know it's probably just me, but boy, they're looking younger all the time to me. So, but I'm sure they said that about me way back when, so congratulations to our department. Congratulations to our city for starting to move in the right direction, and I like that very much. I want to put a couple great hats off. Last Thursday, here at City Hall, we had a demonstration done by the NAACP, and it was the youth of that, and I want to take my hat off and just congratulate them for such a fine job they did in putting on what their feelings were, but yet doing it in a very nice and very great way of doing that. I mean, I think-- I just look at these other cities that are struggling with this stuff, and here in the city of Saginaw, we have-- we really have just the same problems that they're having, except I really want to highlight that the emphasis is stressed on being able to demonstrate without the violence, and I think that just speaks up. Even tonight, the National Action Committee was out front with a candlelight visual. There's no violence. We're getting the message out, no violence, and I'm just so proud to be a part of a city that all our citizens are taking note of this, and taking the leading role in not only telling us what the problem is, because I don't need to be told what the problem is. Tell me what the answers are. Work with us with what the answers are. That's what we need. We need those. Telling me that things are out there that are available, tell me what they are. Show me what they are, so we can use those things. We certainly want to do that, and I'm very, very proud of our city and the citizens that are in that city. Back on December 10th, I was over at the YMCA. I was invited to attend the YMCA's Christmas prayer breakfast, attended by such a wide variety of citizens in our community, all joining together, and it was just a great occasion, and so proud of finishing up this year. We're finishing on a very positive note, and I think that's good for all citizens. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays, whichever suits you, also a Happy New Year. I am, though, at this time, going to excuse myself from this table, and I'm turning the gavel over for the rest of this night to Mayor Pro Tem. I really don't want to announce what I'm going to be doing, because I don't want the rest of the citizens to-- but I'm glad to tell you any time you'd like to know. Thank you very much, and we'll move on. Mayor Pro Tem?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, we'll turn to you for your-- Madam Clerk?
Reports from Manager.
Okay, good evening. Just a few items. The final interviews for the police chief position were conducted last week. We've some-- with this whole search, we've had the time around the holidays, so expect to have a final announcement the week of January 5th. So we should have that selection out in the next few weeks after we get through Christmas and New Years. And I would like to thank Councilman Balls for mentioning the STEM and Career College Expo at the Saginaw Career Complex. This is one of the things we discussed at our city school liaison meeting, and I think it's a great event, and for those of you who aren't as familiar with it, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. That is a fields that are in very high demand, and the Saginaw Career Complex does a great job with having programs for that, as does Delta College. If there are council members who are unable to get to this and still want to learn about it, I think through the committee and Councilman Clock and Councilwoman Bench will be able to set up a tour or some kind of demonstration sometime in the near future with that, so there should be some opportunities to learn more about that, if you'd like. And I would mention another item with the Saginaw schools, and one thing that I think the city needs to do with public safety in all of our departments, and I think we've done a good job of it, is leverage talent in other places due to our limited funds. And the school district has a grant for training of students and introducing them to different jobs and different career paths, and Mr. Terry Pruitt is administering that grant for the school district, and he has been working with Mr. Kevin Gregory to set up a program. I went to a meeting with them and the people from Delta College, and we had a second meeting here with our police chief and our fire chief, and Sergeant Williams and firefighter Green, because they're looking at incorporating the presentation that those members of our staff gave for the youth program. And I think once we get that moving a little bit farther, Mr. Gregory will be able to come and present some of that, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to kick-start those programs with the city and get kids interested in public safety as well. I think it's-- and it's great that we had the plan there that our staff did, and our firefighter and police sergeant came up with that, and it's kind of a platform that they're using, so it's a good launching pad, and we'll get our program started soon after that is complete. The-- I would also update you on 406 Hamilton Development, Hamilton Street Development that Dr. Shaheen is working on. That did go to the Planning Commission. I believe Councilman Caloris reported on that last time, and I did sign the documents for the city today, so that is moving forward. I talked to Dr. Shaheen some time ago, and I think as the project nears, he would likely be willing to come to council to update council members on that project as well. So maybe in the spring, we could have a little bit more information on that. And finally, I wanted to mention that-- I don't know if you've seen any yet, whether they've started playing, but we have some videos on SGTV that will be airing from one of our community members. Ricardo Verdone has made a number of videos about the city of Saginaw that have been on PBS at Delta College, and also that he's done for other projects in the city, such as the Temple Theater. And I think this is a good example of some of the community outreach that we do in the city. I actually spoke at the Rotary Club, and Mr. Verdone is a member of that organization, and one of the items that I end my talks with is different ways that you can get involved in the city. And I gave a similar presentation to the Hispanic Business Association. Mr. Verdone happened to be at that, too, so he got to see a lot of repeat things, because I present a lot of the same things, but he approached me after that and indicated that he had these videos, and he wanted to give the use of them to the city. And we're always looking for items for our SGTV. We used to get a lot from the federal government. Those funds have been cut a great deal, so this is a great opportunity to have one of our active community members involved with the city, and it gives great programming to our SGTV channel, and there are good videos about the city. So it's good for us, and it's good for Mr. Verdone, so we're happy that he's volunteered to do that, and I think we can have programming for quite some time with that. There is a holiday season one that we either are airing or will be airing. It is airing now, so if you could get a chance to check that out, that one, I think, is very good, and then the program he made about the Temple Theater and the restoration is also very good. So we'll probably air that maybe a little later in the year. The next item we have is, I'd like to invite our county treasurer, Mr. Novak, up, and Mr. Stempel to present about the TARP grant. Yes?
Question on you. Let me hear your comments first. Councilman Tibbs?
Well, I guess I was wondering, I know the state recently voted to do a May initiative as far as funding road repair and funding local municipalities. I know it's still kind of early yet, but are we going to have some type of analysis of what that means for the city at some point before then, or is that too early to tell?
Well, I don't know that the state has all those details yet, because they've just completed that. And I'm sure Mayor Pro Tem O'Neill has gotten information from the MML, as I have, and they are still reviewing that proposal. My first impression would be that it's going to help the state a lot more than it helps the local units. That's primarily what it's for. We could benefit to some degree with, and I think that's the impression that was given out when they were putting these plans together, is that the local units will have some increase. I will say that this year, we had an increase, I believe, of about $400,000 in road, street funding. So, that is, shows some commitment from the state. That probably adds another project down this year, a smaller one, but we did have some other cuts. So, we can equalize those things. But, and I would also assure council that if there's any grants out there for streets, we're applying for them. And we have, you all know that we have a very active engineering and streets departments under Mr. Carwatt, and they are always looking at new ways to repair the streets, always looking at ways to extend the life. And you've seen Phil talk. He's well aware of the issues we have with the streets, and they're always working on different ways for funding and repair. So, I don't think we have any issues with working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
We're glad that Mr. Novak could be here today. The county is a real leader with this TARP project and the blight elimination in the city, so we're happy to have him here. And he works with it every day, he and his staff do, so I think he'll be able to provide a lot of great information and answer any questions.
Good. Thank you. And thank you, council, for allowing this opportunity, in particular, Councilman Balls, for your kind comments about the land bank and working with the grant for this. And really, on behalf of the Land Bank Board, its staff, and our Executive Director, Tom Miller, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here. And really, a lot of this is always, when you hear, we talk about the land bank, we talk about the city, a lot of this stuff is all of us working together, and we don't ask whose job it is to do what. We really do work together. And I know if I mentioned people in particular, that I'm going to miss some people, but I do want to say, folks, people like Phil Carwatt, Lori Brown, Kena Walker, John Stempel, Jeff Klopsick, Tom Miller Jr., when our folks call these people and others from the city to ask for help, it's there. You know, they don't, and it's what can we do to help, and what can we do to problem solve? And I just want them all to know, and all the city staff to know, and you should, folks, know, it's very much appreciated from the county end. And traveling around the state and talking to other treasurers, there isn't always that relationship between some of the municipalities and the county, or even the county board and the treasurer. You've seen, there's been lawsuits and stuff. So, I do not take it for granted, nor does the county staff and county commissioners, so thank you. Land Bank currently has close to 4,000 properties in its inventory, of which 90% of those are probably in the city. Most of those are vacant lots. Some of the projects kind of that we're highlighting now, we focus on a lot of the entrances of the city and the flyways, the Grashit area, the Covenant area around Shafer and Hill, Remington and Holland. You know, these are areas that we work with Covenant and any other groups, neighborhood groups, and folks that kind of say, you know, what can we do to either acquire property, eliminate the blight, things like that, and what we're doing. We work with law enforcement on targeted properties, a couple instances in particular. There's one in North Charles where a city police officer came into our office and wanted to know, there's a drug house, and what do we got to do to get rid of it? And, you know, it was going to foreclose in the spring, and you start looking, and the landlord's going to pay taxes, and we ended up going out and we're working on a car on that property and to eliminate that from the street, from the neighborhood. Another instance, the old Superior Dairies on Holmes, the County Sheriff's Department came to us and says, you know, what can we do to get these out? We're working with city staff to get those properties demolished in early January. Criminals hanging out here, they think that maybe some of those dogs that were loose in that southern end were hanging out in there, too. So, a couple areas where we're trying to help out. We do sell properties. We have a person on staff that helps market and sell, and of the 37 homes this year, she's sold 25. The rest of those will either go up for resale. Unfortunately, by the time, sometimes by the time we get to them, they'll have to demolish them, and they'll head towards that, because they become a quickly disrepair. We're putting a focus on some other properties, maybe some of the historical areas that we think are marketable sale, in particular, 111 South Granger is one that we're looking to sell. It's just off of Court Street. So, a note on winter work as it comes up, just to kind of heads up as demolitions occur in the winter, we can knock the structures down, as John and I were talking, but all the extra work that makes it look all pretty and nice that we've been doing cannot happen in the winter months. So, you'll see lots with dirt, lots with impressions, it'd be higher low. So, but the contractors know, and they appreciate the work to go back, and they do really take good care of making the properties look good, to clear the whole area out, as we've kind of explained before. In regards to the hardest-hit grant, I know I left a document with you. I just kind of like to highlight some of the things on there. I'll go through word for word. 11.2 million was granted to the city, that the land bank kind of partnered with this. We have 473 projects completed, 194 are on some early phase of development, whether it be waiting for, you know, gas to be disconnected, environmental study, or maybe it's just a partial invoice. So, for a total of 667 properties in the program. And amongst those, we have been able to purchase and acquire 291 of those properties to eliminate the blight in those. It's almost 300. The county helps out with kind of purchasing these properties upfront to allow, before the reimbursement for the grant, because the reimbursement comes later after a project is completely completed. So, and I know that's been a big help. As far as the revenue breakdown, almost $4 million has been reimbursed from the grant so far, and we're at about 36% of the total expenditure, so a little over one-third. We have an April 15 deadline. We have submitted an extension letter, and we have been assured by those higher authorities than us that that is forthcoming. In regards to some of the maintenance and administration stipends, some of the examples that we've tried to utilize these funds for, we have purchased much-needed equipment for lawn maintenance for the city. We have paid for some trees to be used as some of the long-term maintenance efforts, and some experiment to see how those might work moving forward. And we're already in the planning phases for next year. There's a pastor in the Saginaw High area, and there's some others, as far as what programs can we do and help out with, either neighborhood groups or focusing on the community. So, we're already in, works and work on some of that. A second grant we got to eliminate some of the blight here was the $1.8 million we got in a blight grant that closed in September. So, kind of a final closing on that one. We spent all the money. We took down 144 residential houses, four commercial properties. The houses were in the Saginaw High neighborhood. The commercial properties, we had North School, which was a big one. It helped in the Covenant area. And then you saw the Genesee Washington, we had two buildings kind of connected to the project there on the corner. And then there's a bank building on 119 Federal that we were able to demolish and sell quickly to the Bancroft Eddie Project for parking, much needed. The land bank also sets aside about $1 million a year of budgets for demolition. Most of that is spent in the city limits. And city and county get together and collaborate to find out which source of funds would be best, whether it be Riverfront, CDVG, Land Bank General Fund, does it fit the TARP grant? It's so that we're on the page, and if we could have used some funds for one thing, we didn't use directed funds. So, it's a smart way to kind of work together. So, and I'll leave you to this before John gets to do the fun part. I told him afterwards, he gets to talk all the fun and rosy stuff. But, "A city should not be and is not gauged by its length and width, but by the broadness of its vision and height of its dreams," which John's going to talk to us about now. So, and then we're both available for questions, so.
Was that height of their dreams? Is that a short joke?
That was not.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Prepared a presentation. I do my best to get through this in an organized fashion. My new job description is emergency medical, running grandma and mom to the hospital with this bug that's going around. My advice to you tonight is wash your hands, wash your hands, and stay away from the germs, because it's bad. So, that's my medical advice for tonight. Tonight, I'm going to do a little bit more than, I know the request was for a TARP update, but as I prepared to talk with the Human Planning Commission for this year's round of block grant hearings, I started thinking a little deeper into just knocking things down. I'm going to talk a little bit tonight about what we've done in the past, over the past 15 years, some of the good things that we've done. Debbie said I couldn't use the word "bad," so I'm going to talk about some things that maybe aren't so good, but they've led us here to where we're at today and where we're going in the future. Also, it was asked several times on the way in if I was going to be short tonight. Some male members of our staff apparently have some Christmas shopping yet to do or something, or there's a game on. I just simply said I've been short all my life. So, our history started, actually, when I became employed at the city. I remember Tom Miller running around the office, talking about this burn grant and $1 million, and I got eight months to spend it. And I remember Governor Engler coming here with a big check, and it was a big deal at the time. At that time, we only had general fund money to tear down buildings, blighted buildings in the city, and we all know where that went. It sort of dried up. In the late '90s, we were approved by HUD to use Community Development Block Grant entitlement funds for residential demolitions, and that was, ended up being our only source of funds for a long time, which was quite small. Then in '04, '05, the Saginaw County Land Bank comes on the scene, and over the next few years, after they were established, they began to be a big player in this, through the property acquisitions, through tax foreclosure, and their ability to budget funding for those demolitions. 2006 comes along, Cities of Promise brings us $1.6 million. Shortly after that, we had NSP 1, 2, and 3. Again, a big, big shot of money for residential demolitions. And then today, where we're at with the NSP fund, or the hardest-hit funds of $11.2 Thanks to Jeff Klopsick and his staff. I made a request this morning, because I had a dream last night about this map up here, and after about eight hours, they were, they managed to put it together. Every time I click this button here, it's going to advance one year, and it's going to add to demolitions that have occurred, and it will compile them all on top of one another. I just wanted to see what the map does as I click. All right, so this is starting in 1998. You see a handful of dots on the map. You'll see it. Once I start clicking, it'll all come together for you. One more year. Our computerized records go back to 98, yes.
By, we'd already torn down over 3,000 houses. I mean, this, so this is simply more recent.
Correct. Last 15 years or so. So, as you can see, a lot of stuff going on here with demolitions. Every time, I had to do this two or three times today, because it was kind of, I just couldn't believe how those dots pop up. The, every time we were awarded one of these grants, everybody gets excited, you know, there's a big party, the TV cameras all come out. And this is good, right? Or is it? Yes, it's good that the blight is eliminated, but it's really not, it's not a good thing to qualify for $11 million in grants. We still have some more to go. So, what's the good? What good has come out of this? 20 years ago or so, a representative from Dale Kildy's office came to the city, and they didn't, they didn't even know anybody. So, where are you guys at? What are you doing? How come nobody's asking for money? Which kind of flabbergasted me. He says, "We got money to give, but nobody's asking." That conversation led to $1 million. That was prior to these maps. We've established relationships with the county and the land bank. 20 years ago, we didn't have that relationship. Only time I went to the county is if I had to go and see a judge for a ticket I wrote. Now, I see them on a regular basis. We have a relationship with the state. We know all their names, we know who they are, they know who we are. We have a relationship with HUD. We have a reputation of doing what's right, doing and carrying out what we said we were going to do. Neighborhood associations. 20 years ago, there were some, but not as many as we have. We didn't have all these groups that come to a meeting twice a month, whether it's the chief citywide meeting or the NAG meeting. They'd show up at council, but it wasn't for positive things, it was to complain. You see a lot of positive comments coming from this podium now. We have relationships with individual residents, myself, the community police officers, regular patrol officers, the police chief, the fire department. We're all interacting with one another. Our business community, they know if they come to City Hall for a project, that their project is going to be taken care of, that we're not going to let it get bogged down in government bureaucracy, and we're going to process it, we're going to get it done. And they appreciate that. We've changed neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods have become safer, they've become more desirable to live in. We've reduced crime. The number of arson fires that I have responded to for dangerous structures has gone way down. The demolitions has cleared way for new development. If you remember, under NSP, we built a senior housing facility over by the hospital. That's because of the demolition program that that was able to be completed. We've affected individual lives, quality of life issues. I don't know how many times residents have called me up and said, "What are you going to do with this house next door to mine? I can't even have my family over for Christmas without being embarrassed." They ask me, "Where are you living? Why are you living there?" Those things are greatly reduced today. Last year, we worked on a new strategy for vacant property. We didn't have a strategy before. We cut the grass to grow back, people complained, and we just did it over and over and over again. The county, the land bank, Phil Carwatt, his staff. This past year was a different year for grass cutting. You didn't see near as many people at the podium complaining that they couldn't see at an intersection. The other one that I think is very important, maybe the most important, we made a lot of friends along the way, and we built a lot of trust with our constituency. They trust us. When they ask us to do something, or they bring us a problem, they have confidence that we're going to act. Sometimes it's not the action that they want us to take, but they get an answer, they get action, and they've learned to trust us. Now, the unintended consequences. This year, when I was driving around during the arson watch program, you drive through some of the neighborhoods. When I started here, they were thriving neighborhoods. There was a house on every lot. Now, you drive through some of these neighborhoods, and you might see somebody living on an island all by themselves. The basic functionality of the neighborhood in some areas is gone. You know, where you used to have people coming home, and they say hi to their neighbor, because they're right there, the neighbor is way down there now. It's one of them things that happens when you tear down that many locations. Once beautiful buildings have disappeared. Once beautiful buildings, uh, have disappeared, um, e- even now, as I walk through some of the, the abandoned structures, the architecture, the, even maybe not the most significantly architectural, uh, building, uh, but on the inside, you go in there, and there's moldings that are this tall, and there's solid oak panel doors that haven't been painted yet, and hardwood floors through the whole buildings, it's, it's really the sad part about the demolition program. Blight removal, it's obviously a necessary evil. The, these things attract things that, that cause our residents to leave, um, they create huge safety issues, um, when they catch on fire, they, they many times damage the, the occupied structure next door, um, they certainly harbor criminals, um, animals, things that, that people don't like. But, the good news is, is that enough bad? Is that okay, Debbie? Was that all right? I got a lecture this morning. We're finally, I believe, we're, we're at the point where we start thinking beyond demolitions. I said it a couple times that I wanted to go out of the demolition business before my, my work at the city is done, and for the first time, I think we're close. We've had twenty years of aggressive demolition in the city, at least. What are we gonna do when the last abandoned building's torn down? Like I said, we need one more shot of money, I believe, from this TARP grant, and I think we're gonna be there. So, how do I know we are there? Last, I think it was January, the mayor's State of the City address. I was sort of flabbergasted when he went down all the list of that stuff that, uh, that was happening in the city. Things like the Bancroft and Eddy Apartments, the C and D and Delta Projects, the outdoor pavilion at the Dow, Washington Avenue, um, market rate housing, condos over Jakes, Sheen Development, uh... Mr. Carwatt's fixing a lot of roads. Look at Washington Avenue, look at Genesee, and look at Hamilton Street. I don't know how long the mayor talked, but it seemed like he had a lot to say that day. And, uh, the same thing with, uh, with the city manager, his presentation to Delta College. It just, it was amazing, all the stuff that's going on here. So, the positive talk, um, it seems to be going around everywhere. We need to keep it going. I, I believe if everyone's talking the talk, pretty soon people start believing it. And I think we're close. So we have to come up with a plan. I know we do things like the master plan, which kind of talks in generalities, and talks about future land use and the zoning ordinance, um, but I think we need to plan with great specificity. I had to practice that word today. We have to know what we want. We're not, we need to know where we want it. We need to know who's responsible for making it happen. Then we need to market it. Things happen when they are made to happen, they don't happen on their own. Shift, shift of focus, all the pieces are here. Development seems to go where it's easy. Why do they build the Walmart and the cornfield? Because there's nothing in the way. They put a couple pipes up there, pipe up the bathroom, build the building, and they're open. It's a little different in the city. We've got stuff in the way. Thing that we're coming upon with the four thousand properties that Mr. Novak owns, um, we all of a sudden have real estate control. Half the battle is having control of the property. We need to have clean sites. We're cleaning them up. We're taking all the foundations out of the ground, we're backfilling them with good material, we're getting all the brush and all the stuff that's in the way, out of the way. Zoning's gotta be ready. Nobody wants to come to a location where they gotta go through, you know those bad meetings that happen at the zoning board and the planning commission? Business doesn't wanna do that. Brings attention that they don't want. We have to make sure govern, and I, this is hard to say sometimes, and somebody might agree with me, but we gotta get government out of the way. We have to make it easy for them. They have to know that coming to Saginaw is where they wanna go. Focus on filling in, filling in the holes that are left from the demolition program, focus on preserving what's left. There's still a lot of good stuff out there that, that we need to, we need to focus on instead of tearing it down. So, the time is now, at least in my opinion. The blight will be gone soon, we have a lot of land site control, crime is decreasing, the management team at the city is stable, at least in my opinion. We have many partners. I've, I've listed them for you. The city council is stable, and that's not just because you, you guys are the boss, it's because I believe that. You guys work well together. It hasn't always been that way. I've been here for a number of years, and I've seen a lot of battles happen at that So my final words, let's take it to the next level, we're ready to go. Thank you for your time tonight, and my last slide that I forgot to go to was Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. If you have questions, Councilman, uh, Boss.
The Wanda Gas Credit Union has gotten some grants, um, for the city of Saginaw. We build transitional homes, uh, we worked with the Habitat before, and, uh, just today, uh, we was talking about the Saginaw High School neighborhood, and that we would, uh, love to partner with the, uh, city of Saginaw and the land bank to help fix up the Saginaw High School area right there in front of the Wanda Gas Credit Union. We investing a lot of money in that building there, new signs and stuff, so, um, we, we will be willing to help get grants to help fix up some of those properties. If you would get in contact with us, uh, the Wanda Gas Credit Union, we'd be more than happy to work with you.
I, I have talked with Miss, Mr. Williams, right?
Yes.
During, um, in the past, it was right about the time we were doing NSP, and they had some of those funds too, and we were sort of buried with that, but, uh, I appreciate that information, and as you know, I'm a member there too.
Yes.
Is he the gentleman to talk to?
He would be the gentleman, but you need to recognize I'm his boss.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate that information.
Well, I went to Detroit on a land bank exchange, and there's local banks in Detroit that are, they're doing just like this, partnering with rehabilitation efforts and things like that, so this is intriguing, it's something to keep me in the loop, we can see what we can do to help them.
They'll make it happen.
Are there any other questions? Councilman Clark?
Mayor Protem. I, I don't want you to tip your hand, so to speak. Do you have, I assume you're, you're coming up with some plans, with some thoughts and some ideas about the next level?
Well, I, I think that, that is a, bigger than just me.
Well, I agree, but I mean...
Strategic planning session that I think we will be covering is, um, a development plan, and it's, it's not gonna be a detailed eighty-page document, but, um, a couple-page document or bullet points on what we believe we should focus on, and that will affect what grants that we do attempt to get. We have a limited staff, and, and we'll be talking about some additional restructuring in the city, but, um, that's one of the things in the meeting with, um, uh, Tom Miller Jr. and Yolanda Jones, who's been working with block grant, um, the past several months, but we know there are a lot of grants out there, but you can't, you, with the staff that we have, and, and you can't go and apply for everything if you don't have a focus on what you want, what your goals are. So, we'll be working on that. I know that Tom has probably talked to, to John about that. I'm, I'm certain the land bank has some other goals beyond that too, but one of the things that, that I wanna see is, um, we, uh, that we get, start getting our groups that work on the same projects together. There was an attempt made at that, I don't necessarily think it was extremely successful, but I think a minimum, we need to get the land bank, the DDA, Saginaw Future, and, um, the Old Town Business Association, and, um, Downtown Saginaw Association to meet on a fairly regular basis so we don't have different focus groups going in different areas, but that's, that's gonna be kind of our, our long-term planning, and, and we expect a presentation like that at, at our, um, strategic planning session. I also asked the DDA director to present at that session because the DDA is a, um, organization that was created by the, by the council, so...
Right.
I believe you will need to have a big impact on, on what their, um, goals and objectives are. They, they put it together, but I think they need to get councils input too to make sure that we are moving in the same direction, and that we have the same goals and philosophies. So, that will be part of that, um, Sat- Saturday session.
As a follow-up, thank you, that, that's sort of what I was hoping to hear, that there is something in the works that will help us help you, so to speak, to work together on this. I am curious if there has been any, and it may well be too early in the, in the process for this, but to be thinking about reaching out, there are certain foundations, and may be able to give grants for the specific kind of development we're talk, I mean, what I...
Development of a plan.
Certain foundations are focused on development issues. I know the Wicks Foundation, just as one, is, is sort of what you call a bricks-and-mortar type of foundation. They do focus on those kinds of things more than other foundations, and there's others along that line. It's worth seeing if those kinds of things might, those kinds of foundations may be willing to give us some guidance, or some help, or financial assistance, whatever the case may
Councilman, Councilman Boss?
Took a look at the, uh, the elementary schools and junior high schools on the city of Saginaw that's been vacant for years. I know other communities take those schools and make apartment buildings out of them. I seen on the west side of the city where they make old folks home out of them, or senior citizen living home. Uh, I think maybe we need to start, you know, doing some development with those schools. We got two or three schools around here that really, really, really could use some development. So hopefully you guys have taken a look at that.
We have taken a look at a number of the schools, because there has been some interest in, in just what you're talking about. Um, uh, from developers, uh, actually from the area that, that are local people that, that we know and trust, um, it just, uh, it, it's just never got to the point where it was economically feasible to do so, um, because of the amount of work that it takes to, to change a school, which is, you know, it's built as an institution, you know, it's got a concrete block hallways and classrooms, and how do you take something like that and make it somebody's home? So there's some challenges with those things. Um, and I think there has been some reluctance on, on the school to, to sell them. I don't think they really had their plan figured out on, on what their plan was to, to mow these properties, um, mostly because probably the threat of a charter school moving into one of their school buildings and competing for their students. So I think that's something that's gonna shake out here in the near future, but, um, that's sort of where, we have done some investigation.
I think maybe we should talk to, uh, some of our state representatives, see if they can get us some money here to do that work with. Thank you.
Hey, gentlemen, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Novak, uh, Ms. Temple. Again, uh, and, uh, I know the city manager's been very involved in, you know, making sure we had a collaborative relationship. I think that's how we get, uh, you know, the most bang for our buck, and, uh, Mr. Novak, in your efforts for, for this, uh, the, the grass issue that we've been talking about, I know we met a couple times, and then had our team present some, some information, so I would, I would attest, there has not been the frequency of complaints since we informed the public about what our plans are. I think that's important. You know, informing the public about what our plans, and very glad to hear you say what you said, in terms of the next steps, in terms of developmental plans, you know, how, how does the city look ten, fifteen years down the road? I think when people hear that, they'll embrace it and jump on board and do what they need to do to support that vision. The vision is what drives, uh, activity, so thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Manager.
The land bank and, uh, and John's office have done a lot of work with Covenant Hospital, and even two more houses there in Remington I've seen this week come down. Just was relayed to me, they had a large group of people that were there to look at, uh, tour the CMU facility at Covenant, uh, last week, I believe, and, and some large foundations, uh, from outside of Saginaw, and they were, uh, very, uh, positive about that, the neighborhoods around Covenant, what they've been doing, and that's a great example of the collaborative effort between government and, uh, a private nonprofit company, uh, that, as well as around the CAN council, they've done a, a lot of, of work around there too, and I know the land bank and, and John's, uh, people have been very helpful to them and, and vice versa, so I'd, um, like to recognize that as well.
That's great. Great. And Saginaw's talked about, I was on LinkedIn the other day, and, uh, someone put a post of Saginaw and, and the before and after Bancroft, I don't know if anybody's seen that, uh, but I, I jumped in there and, and said just what you said, I said, uh, city government, uh, plus business, and, uh, state partnerships equal the new Bancroft, uh, building. So, got a lot of hits on that. So, people are talking about what we're doing here, and it says Saginaw's on its way back, which, you know, we all know is the case, so, thank you guys for all the work that you're doing, and all the folks that work with you to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. And, um, finally, one thing I did, um, I did have down, but I forgot to mention earlier is that the, um, audit has been completed too, so that's, um, done timely. Once again, it's due, uh, by the thirty-first, so, um, I met with the auditors last week and went over everything. So they will be, um, presenting to council, I believe, on the February, the first meeting in February, just because, um, the first meeting in January was unavailable, and the second, our second meeting is gonna be that Saturday meeting, so it'd be, be better for us to focus on, uh, different, um, issues, and, and I think the, the main thing that, that, that I would like to go into that meeting with is, is updating you all on the, those development-type activities, as well as, um, uh, some of the proj, Councilman Clark and I are involved in another project, um, that I think councils, um, should hear about, and also the, um, an update on the, the plan that we put together last January, what items have we completed on there, and where are we at on some of those, and it might be an opportunity for, for more council members to get involved in, in some of those things. If you're interested in the, the breakout groups that we had, I think that, that, um, there's some opportunities there.
Okay.
And that concludes the management update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Protem, your next item of business is the consent agenda.
Okay, I just want to announce that the business proposal was... All, on the city's website, on SEGT channel nine, one ninety-one. Uh, we need a motion to adopt a consent agenda, leaving room for exceptions.
A little...
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, the consent agenda's passed. I'm sorry. Are there any exceptions? Excuse me. I think I did ask for an exception. I did.
Did you?
I read it. Yes, I'm sorry. I did ask for an exception.
You did.
Did I move too fast for you, Councilman? Okay.
I'm ready to move back.
Okay. We did vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The consent agenda's been approved.
Mayor Protem, your next order of business is reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, Councilman Blunt, are you on the boards, commis, boards committee? Okay, I'd like for you to go through and ask for their approvals, please.
All right. Make a motion to approve the council reappointment of Blanche Clark to the Saginaw Transit Authority Regional Services for a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Any move to support it? All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
I also make a motion to approve the council reappointment of Dorothy Allen to the Saginaw Transit Authority Regional Services for a term to expire January twenty-third, twenty eighteen.
Need motion to approve?
I made the motion. We just need a support.
Is there support? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I also make a motion to approve the council reappointment of Ernie Ahmad to the zoning Board of Appeals for the term to expire December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Say move to support it? Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Am I allowed to do that one?
I'll do that one. I'll thank you.
Yeah. Sorry.
I would move for approval for the city manager's appointment of Annie Bench to the Downtown Development Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2018.
Any move to support it? Is there any discussion? No discussion? Any move to support it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appointments are approved. Madam Clerk?
Protem, your next item of business is...
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any other reports from the boards and commission and committees?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. I met with the city attorney, Ms. Santos, as well as Mr. Morales this past week to discuss the crime-free lease addendum proposal. I guess we left that meeting putting the proposal into a city ordinance format. Hopefully, the subcommittee will meet again next month, and possibly the city council will have it for the February 2nd meeting for beginning their review process. And that's all I had.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Your next item of business is motions and miscellaneous.
Are there any motions of, any motions of any other business? Anything else? Need a motion to adjourn? Move to support it? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.